Call to order the. We're gonna call to order the, uh, the public hearing on the use of monies from the expendable, the technology expendable trust fund. For a video production computer system. And so somebody that we do have the.
Have information.
Yeah.
So it's the replacement, um, equipment for the key connection to license and, um, to edit any videos. The current one that we have, uh, the compatibility of the software is not there and this one will be a standalone system. Won't require the updates from software.
This is what Trey told us about that.
Yeah.
But that's the total fifty-nine sixty-one ninety-seven.
Fifty-eight ninety-six.
That's.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry, I must have misheard you.
Wait, wait, that's the total for that as well, but the entire purchase is six thousand. Well, but there's no, there's no shipping on here.
Oh.
I'm a quote, there is actually no shipping, but I would maybe vote up to six thousand just in case.
Okay. To cover shipping.
Yes.
Oh.
And I, I know we heard a little bit about it from Trey, um, it's like we have a piece of outdated equipment, just replacing, does anyone have any further questions or commentary about that? And we don't have any public ethics paid this evening. So I guess I will. Um, set the motion to prove the expenditure of up to six thousand dollars. Uh, for the technology expendable trust for the purchase of a replacement. Video production computer system.
So much.
Second, thank you, Tammy, but the joke. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those favor, so you can perhaps say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With the closed sessions and that motion carries and with that we will adjourn the. Public hearing on the expendable for the technology question. And off the order of the regularly scheduled. School board meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes on January.
Make a most, the minutes of January, eight, that's presented.
Like Tammy.
One second.
They just done.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. And then, uh, any further discussion on this?
Sharon, awesome job on minutes. You do a great job.
All those favor, including the minutes, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close sessions and the motion carries. Next up is correspondence. I did not receive any correspondence.
Didn't either.
And then, uh, that is the semester's report.
Did you have some manifest here and I'll be talking a lot. The bike, when we get to the budget, we'll be discussing that.
So nothing for those.
None of this.
No news is good news.
Okay.
Doctor Stenny.
We have professional development coming up in February for two days on literacy coaching and training. Um, outline is the community, uh, the strategic plan, um, community planning timelines and. Uh, we posted on the website, so there's a page on that site. When you go to our website, also you may find that we configured slightly different. Um, Sharon did an amazing job, was kind of going through and cleaning it up. So we do get the new website and it's easier to merge it over. So. Now we've been looking at every page there to say, does this make sense anymore? So it's cleaned up a little bit. Uh, but it's posted there, uh, social media, on messaging and all called once again, um, get those out this week to be able to get. Uh, good tool of individuals to have a strategic plan. Um. And, um, where are the dates of things coming up, um, just for your information? And then I do have a really exciting update. Uh, I was able to work with, it's exciting. Sorry, I was able to work with, uh, Matt Manning around, um, college. Credits, um, in the savings our students had. So between our college credits online and going to campus and. AP classes, uh, this, this class, um, humanity will achieve three hundred and six college credits. If that were to transfer into UNH, it's a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Wow.
Um, Plymouth is a hundred and thirty-nine and then Lakes Region is about sixty-six.
And that's just the first half of the year.
That's when they finish out this year. So that's the master. So this, this one, no, this one class, it's over two years. We really pushed the dish here. So a lot of kids. Have it, but it's just for this graduating class. It's not the juniors that are taking it or the sophomores.
That's phenomenal. That is phenomenal.
Yeah.
You say even, even at the community college, it would be like sixty and something thousand dollars.
Maybe sixty-five thousand seventy-two thousand nine hundred. Yeah. So if you were to distribute it amongst the nineteen students, it's about seventy-five hundred dollars savings per student. I mean, it's not equal that way. So the kids.
Sure, sure.
Still, as we move forward and, um, we're planning with Patton and man, just trying to, if kids want to do V-Lab, it's great, but there are those college classes that are free and trying to push that for those students.
Awesome.
It was exciting to get that today. So we'll write that off and it'll be in the district report.
Nice. And. They can, are there additional credits that go on the rest of the semester?
So these are dual, so you can be duly involved. So that print the credits for here for our graduation requirement, but these will be credits. So if they go to a state. Um, caught the university of college, this, a university system of the enter, they will transfer automatically. And so those kids will have a job on their college education and a lot of. Uh, their schools are taking, will take like up to twelve credits and.
But so there's no more credits. If there were more.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I think what she's, these are calculated, the ones that currently taking this semester and they graduate, or they graduate, right? So, okay, so there's the whole of you.
But they could, if somebody might take an eight-week class and then decide they want to sign up for something, but what we are aware of right now, and by the time they graduate, this is what it looks like. There could eventually be. But, and this is only the senior. But, yeah.
I didn't mean to say, but that's it. No.
I guess what I'm saying, dude, I was thinking about like graduation, yeah, what a, what a great little staff to share.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Yeah, it was good for him to track those.
And, and this is our first year really.
Really pushing it. We did some last year, but this year we've really been pushing it. So, I mean, they've done some every year. I can't say just last year, but we've had a considerable piss on it this year. So you'll hopefully see that kind of grow up.
Well, it seems like a really good way to save some money and can get.
And Matt's gonna start tracking, he said, not only just be part of those tracking, like, see, it's a good handle.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, it just, there's a note in your report.
What's that?
There's just another note there. About normal.
Yes. It's just about it.
Thank you. How's everyone tonight?
Great.
See everyone. Uh, yeah, two things to report on. Uh, we had our poetry out loud championships. At the Woodstock station, uh, according to Heather. Peril, I think she said it was one of our largest turnouts. That was how to get all those extra chairs out and.
Yeah.
Everyone to sit around. So she couldn't remember when it had been that crowded. So it was great. Um, maybe it was the elementary and middle school warm-up acts that, that.
Oh, that was awesome.
Wasn't it?
Yeah.
I, I said to myself, I'm like, I don't know if I would have had that bravery to get up and. In that age and, and speak into a microphone in front of people.
Yeah, no way.
Oh, I know. They were great.
They were there.
Yeah, they were, they were definitely amazing. Um, so we had, um, high school students. Um, that were, uh, recited their poems were Blake Botson, uh, Sarah Jolly, Teagan Boucher, Briar Clark. Maha Hwan and Dalton Lilic and Maisie Anderson. And at the end of the night, um. Sarah Jolly will be our alternate and Dalton, uh, Dalton, excuse me, Dalton Lilic is our winner. So what they'll do is the next stop will be the Concord State House and, um.
When is that?
I don't, I don't think I have, I don't think, the last time I checked with, um, Heather, she wasn't sure of the date yet. Um, but Sarah will go down anyway with us and she'll, she'll help out, but in case anything happens to Dalton, Sarah will step in, but.
Fantastic.
She'll go down and assist.
Let us know when that is.
I will do that. Uh, we've been working on, uh, we had MLK Day on Monday and previous to that. Uh, kids are working in their advisories. Um, with MLK and advisories were six through twelve, all mixed together. And, and the different advisories and they came together and reviewed over the years, we have looked at certain speeches and, and people have. You know, sort of dug into those speeches and wrote their own poems or, um, speeches from that. And, um, as you can see on this, this year, they, they had a couple of days where they, they had a collaborative, uh, advisory meetings. And, um, they finished up, um, obviously today, the state, yeah. They, they say, yes, thank you. Uh, with their shoe template. And it basically, they had pictures of shoes where students can choose what type of shoe they were going to use. And they would use pictures as it says drawing words or quotes. And to think about their, their sort of template for their road, how their road will follow and have a blue, a blueprint of that. Um, and then. So that was very successful. We've been doing that for many years. When I was teaching here, we were doing that. Mixing with advisory. So it's very fun. It's a good way for high school teachers to get to know some of the middle school. Um, students too, that you normally don't see and interact with during the day. And then last Friday, uh, the middle school had a tropical dance. Which was very well attended, uh, a lot of fun. I got the honor of being a chaperone, which was very exciting. Um, yes, very energetic group of kids. You don't have to be dancing either, you know, there's a lot of other things they do. Yes. All good, running around the gym and having fun.
I'd be tired just thinking about it.
Yes, it was very tired. Um. I have this, uh, Ashley. Ashley gave me this stamp that said, Mr. Stavali approved, and once the kids found out, they all had to come in and I had to give them. That stamp. So it was fun. I had fun. I really enjoyed myself. So I appreciated their willingness to ask me to come and, uh, be their chaperone. Um, I would also like to, uh, if I may propose our graduation date. I know in the calendar, uh, you don't put it in, but, uh. For June sixth, that graduation, which is that one week before the end of school, which will be the thirteenth as of right now, without any snow days or interruptions.
June sixth.
Yeah, June sixth would be graduation date because the last week of school will be that next Friday.
And his, um. Continuation?
Oh, for eighth grade.
Usually the following Monday.
Yeah, that fall, yeah.
He tried to do it, well, depending now you guys let him have, um, graduation outside and stuff, but when it was only inside. Excuse me, we did graduation on Friday and then they do continuation Monday so that any leftover decorations and such.
That is, so that is true, yeah.
So we've done that, did that for years. And then they can recycle some of the. Decorations and such.
So, yeah, thank, yeah, thank you very much. Right. Uh, committee report, we've got some. Uh, minutes in the packets for the office and the policy committee. Um, and we have. We had a meeting of the. Facilities committee this evening. We have, it's, it's an hour and.
Yeah, nothing, uh, I do have one question on Warren articles in a second, but. Uh, Warren article, we're gonna ask for doing the rest of the board. Uh, the elementary windows, there's a hundred and eight windows. They're looking at getting some grants to do that. Uh, that turns out the electric company, we, we wasn't enough savings for that. Uh, there's a couple of issues with the HVAC up here with it being the oxygen. We have people coming in to flush that out. And we're putting Tammy on the agenda for the CIP update.
Yep.
And that was it on that. My question with the Warren article is. We were gonna ask the town. For the two hundred and nine thousand to do the whole project, but we also talked about breaking it down into.
That's boring.
Yes, if they do not accept that, we have another thing they have to break it down for two.
I, I think the way it would happen is someone on the floor would say. We would propose, we could, we could break it down and say, well, if we would propose to do, they would cut the number. They would change the number.
Okay.
Do that right there.
Yeah, I don't think.
You'd have to do it prior, you have to do it prior to it failing. If it fails, it's done.
Right, so someone can amend it, just like they could amend our budget. They can amend.
But how do you know that we wanted amended? Do you know what I mean? It's, if you've got a two hundred and nine thousand dollar Warren article. And there's discussion and then you vote, it's voted down, it's gone. There's no amending it at that point.
But you can't change the total. Someone can't say, let's do it.
Prior to a vote.
Yeah, yeah.
You just listen to see if there's opposition and then take the chance or?
Well, you should.
Usually there's a presentation, so one of you guys put it.
Yeah, Casey already volunteered.
Yeah. Can, can, can explain, you know, we normally ask for a hundred and fifty, this year we're asking for two hundred and nine.
To complete the project.
Yeah, I have a problem.
You know, and then if somebody says, well, let's just do a hundred and fifty.
Then we'll get you, I got you. So there's no discussion. If everybody's like, okay, sounds good. We just go with it. Yeah.
But there usually is.
Right, absolutely.
My only thing was, I, I know we had discussed in the two parts and if this didn't pass, where will we at?
Right.
That's true.
Should we be prepared with like a, what we're.
I know we've done before, but this doesn't pass, we have another article after we went to do a different way, but.
So I feel like, I feel like if.
I don't want to give people the choice to do that.
No, no, I feel like if it's, if it's unlikely to pass, we're, we're gonna know that from the feedback.
Yeah.
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 That's, I feel like, I feel like if we're not, we generally aren't surprised by.
But I just, I just, that's why I asked. I don't want to get up there and have, have it not pass and go.
Yeah.
And I mean, historically, we've had extremely supportive others.
Oh, I don't. Yeah, and we're asking for something completely new.
Absolutely.
We're completing the project two years ahead of time by, by doing it all right then too, so.
Right.
And I understand that, but you just never know.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I guess. I wouldn't, that's all I.
Okay.
Um.
And then the other, just sorry, you, you're putting, putting Tammy on and the CIP on the agenda. Is that going to be on the next? Facilities agenda or is that going to be on the board?
Go to four, four, two hundred, we want to present it to the.
Yeah. Um, elementary windows, you have an estimate on those yet?
Uh, there's a hundred and eight windows.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, but that was three years ago.
So a hundred and sixty thousand.
That's not unrealistic.
Probably not far off, honestly.
Oh, all this stuff went up.
So, right, right. What are the grants that could be available?
Well, there's a grant, we've talked about this, there's been, um, it's through the, the Hampshire Department of Energy, called the SEED grant, S-E-E-D.
Yeah.
We applied for that grant, um, couple of, few years back when we were doing the elementary HVAC, the energy savings grant. So I looked at the details and it comes out in March, I think, March or April. Um, and Windows. Does qualify, you know, as.
Do we need any matching funds for that?
I don't think so, but I wanted.
I know, because if it's a matching fund grant, we should put those matching funds in the warrant.
Well, we can use the trust fund.
Or we could use the trust fund if, if there's enough in the trust fund to cover the matchings. Put the matches, okay.
Um, cool.
Depending on how much. We get all these, trust fund a little bit this year too, if we had to.
And we have. Like break it down in a couple. Just way to that way.
Sure.
Prioritize this over the next few years, whatever the grant allowed, whatever the grant allows us to do, yeah, because grants are always good. I mean, if we don't get the grant, we might use our trust funds again, do a little bit here, a little bit there.
If we don't get the grant, can we use the unexpendable fund balance?
Tain Fund Balance.
But does that have, does that, that doesn't have to be done at. Town meeting, that can be done on a regular. We can fund, yeah.
There was a discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
At the budget meeting about. The distribution of the retained fund balance. Um, and we can retain the money, how you want to use that, I think. Sound like more like we might want to use that for emergency type situations. Or like we even said, like if they don't approve the flooring, we really want to get that, not, we use it for that.
I get that, but what about unexpendable fund balance? Because you'll get your retained fund balance and what, but you.
Unexpendable fund balance has to be voted like we do with the trust fund.
Right. But we could use that, not be retained fund balance, that's different. We have to use the unexpendable fund balance at the end of the year, uh, as a warrant to cover the windows or the flooring or anything. So just, and it doesn't affect. The incoming tax rate because we already have that money. We just won't give it back to lower.
What you're gonna put in the trust.
Exactly. Um, do you have an idea, um, what? The unexpendable fund balance looks like? Not yet. And I mean, obviously we want a hundred thousand, we always usually put it in the trust funds, but if there's more, if there's another hundred, we could use that for the windows or half of the flooring or something. And it's not your retained fund balance, which I, is fine, if you want to use it for emergencies, that's fine, but there is. The possibility of using unexpendable fund balance and it not affecting the tax.
I would just increase what you put into the trust funds, but try to increase it.
Right.
So in terms of, uh, um, facilities trust fund, since.
Put a little bit more.
We could say up to eight.
Hundred thousand, yeah. Perfect.
That we, that's something that we're gonna have to change in the round tonight though, because that's part of the process.
Yeah.
Um, is that it, third? And then, um. While we go through these.
You have the minutes.
Yeah. Good questions. I'll jump back fully going with committees. Policies, is there any? You got any responses?
Um, I think that there have been people who have applied, um, and. That they do the selection line out, but they're gonna let us know how much. Believe there's only going to be people looking at it. So if you can. Spread the word, that would be great, or apply yourself.
How many school board members do they want? Do they have, sometimes they say two, sometimes they say.
It's really gonna depend on how many apply. Yeah, three would be the limit.
Four, we have to post every. Is what I'm saying, so two.
No, but if you have one, right, three of, you could have five, then you could do all three.
Yes, it's, it's gonna depend on the balance of the committee.
I did already too. So there's two.
If there's. But it is, it is a really good experience. It's really good. It's a very good.
Agreed.
Process. It's really neat how they do it. They use a lot of like, um. You know. It, it's, it's really awesome. So, but I think that we need to have a presence and maybe we need to plan for that. Is anybody?
Kind of, if all the school board members apply, say, and like no one from the community or no teachers, or there's a lot of teachers, they, they, they're gonna select. Base to make it fair.
Right.
So to see about what's changed. But there's not exact number, but usually they're gonna say one or two. Please.
It, it's, it entails going to meetings and working through the process with them. Yeah, it's not that many.
It's not passing.
It's right there, um, I, in my memo.
Yeah.
To you, it's outlined there. And then there's also, um, some attachment documentation of what each of those look like, but. So it looks like there's one meeting a month until June. Yeah, so what will happen is they'll have those meetings, you guys will take all that information that's been gathered, a draft report, that'll go back out to the committee for review. The school board for review, then it'll go back to this committee to clean it up and then it will be presented.
And I think it's, well, I'm the in-person meeting investor soon.
There will be two in-person meetings, the first one and the last one, and then we, and two soon, the in-person meetings will be about three hours. Up to three hours, no more than that. And then assuming will be not any, that won't be any longer than nine. We can do, yes, but make sure people. Anybody at the end of the table interested in doing this? Because we definitely need school board member presents. Um, I will do it as a last resort. I've done it before and I have an incredibly busy spring, but I just want to make sure we have.
As long as you do, put your name out there, they're gonna keep, he was, they choose.
Yeah, but if anybody else wants my spot, they can come. I'm Casey.
Everybody could, anybody.
No, 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 I'm bringing this up to make sure there is a present. I have done it in the past. What's that?
But I think they'll make sure that there's representation on that.
And that there's balance, like different points and.
Why are you looking at the other tables?
No, no, I'm just sharing to see who's.
I'm gonna go in there, fill in all Kevin's info. It might be a teacher.
That's right. I don't know if it's gonna be that.
No, it won't. I'll just.
We do appreciate your service.
Well, he does. All right. What's question, Jay?
Uh, I don't know that necessarily there's any questions. I think if you, is there any highlights that you wanna, or anything you want to direct our attention to?
Other than what's in the minutes, no.
Minutes again.
Yeah.
Is this the new second reading?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, that's a good job.
Yeah, that's right.
Does anyone have any questions or further discussion on the policies? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion that remove policies BBBF, EBC, HGBB, AIH, AM, JLF. VAF, EHIC, JJIV, JLP, EBC, ADH, RIGE. JLC, JH, second meeting.
Ooh.
I don't think we have to do that.
So.
Summer. But we don't? Seriously? We don't have to do that?
Move by Tammy, second by Tammy. Any further discussion? All, all those favor, so what I was saying, aye? Where are you, where are you?
Well, we have very.
Remind me that next time I go.
All right. Next up is. The nominations, recommendations, reservations on there. The other media contracts.
Yeah, it was ready. Wow, she was ready. She wanted to pass it there, but yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Let him give them a minute, let him go through it.
So. No changes.
You didn't know? Yes, sir.
No, no changes from.
From what we discussed.
Right.
I don't think there was anything additional. We had a quick non, non, non-meeting and I'm like, it, it, the only difference. But can we discuss, it hasn't been ratified, can we discuss it?
It has been ratified.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Um, I think the only difference was the one percent more in health insurance costs. Which is on the second page on the floor.
So first page is just all the highlights. The second page is that the actual cost item, you can see in the more article.
Yeah.
Which is so some of that's repetitive. Second page, but not all of them are cost items.
But nothing else other than when we had the non-meeting and discussed it, but nothing changed.
No, yeah, we talked about the insurance. We, I, the only change was to um, additional salary increase on the second year that we agreed on.
Right.
At the very end, which was. No.
Yeah. And the last point on the first page was that the school board will um, have a policy for um, tuition for. Is it the last one?
Yeah.
Say, yeah, the the non-resident employee tuition waiver for their children. Instead of being part of the union contract, it'll just be a school board policy.
Have that stipulated increased across the board or is that just the couple stipulations or?
It was for the, for the coaches and such. It was a process. Yeah. And it was long overdue.
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And I don't know if we had mentioned that we added life insurance. I don't know if we talked about that. And I don't know if we talked to them about, or if we need to, I don't know, the work year change, changes. I don't know if that's something.
Oh, right. Instead of two evening activities, it was three evening activities. One happened was with the, with the student-led conferences. It was um, eating up a um, professional, professional development day. And so we put in the contract that they have a third evening, so they're not using up that special development day. They're using the third required evening for the student conferences.
So that we can get more professional development.
Right.
That was a goal.
And that was their goal, wanting more professional development. So that's how we kind of.
That was that full role. Administrators and.
Yeah, that was great.
And then these are just policy changes.
Particle changes.
Changes in the contract.
I meant.
Right, yes.
Yes.
In our whole language, but contract terms that we've changed.
Correct.
Not necessarily the cost side. Some of them do have cost term, but those costs are highlighted.
Yeah, the second page is the cost. So on the warrant for the first year is the increase at the bottom, the two oh six to eighty-one.
Yes.
And the second year increases one ninety-one oh sixteen. Which is the largest we've. Ah, but it.
Yeah, last time it was off time. I think I gave you that last time.
Ninety-four, eighty-three, yeah, that's right. I think it's a sign of the times, honestly. I'm not the only ones. We, we made it a goal to kind of stay competitive without being the top of the ladder and certainly not at the bottom, trying to be competitive and fair. Right, exactly. Yeah.
Is there any questions or further discussion on that?
Do you need any action on that?
Yeah, I think we need to approve.
Yes, we do. Accept and verify. The contracts and report and bring it to a board.
So just a motion to approve the LWA teachers contract for two years as proposed. So moved. Second.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, all of the favors and folks saying aye. Close sessions and commission parents. So that will be included as all the warrant.
We're gonna take that in the bests, but do you need a back on that?
Um, probably should. That's.
Alright, then um, the budget, so where the budget is ready for approval, right?
Right. So in your blue folder, in the packet, there was some budget information in the blue folder, the warrant articles. The tax rate. Based on the budget work sessions we put together, the warrant articles. Um, the changes that were made in the budget, so in the the budget includes all of the funds, does not include any warrant articles, so it includes like um, grant funds, food service funds, which have offsetting revenues, but we have to gross appropriate everything. So the budget that's in this warrant article, the operating budget represents two and a half percent increase over last year's one point eight percent over last year's total general fund, which includes the debt. As you remember, our debt went down. Um, so then adding in all of our funds, the total budget that is reflected in warrant article five is nine million six hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar increase over last year's. Same number, same line.
That's incredible, considering that.
Only a hundred fifty-eight thousand.
In terms of, and that, is that with the the debt service reduction.
Yeah, yeah, because it was like two hundred and seventeen thousand for debt, so a hundred fifty-eight thousand.
So that number, the number in the warrant article, you said is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars more than last year.
Yeah. When you're looking at the same line. Which I think I just first continue packet, just the first two pages of your detailed budget. So when you look at page two, the total general fund before debt, the fund transfers, that's around two and a half percent increase on our operating budget. Two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase. The total general fund. So Jay, the most updated one is in your board package.
I'm seeing.
And I think.
I'm gonna start to the back of my policy.
See the back. Just, just the spreadsheet. On the second page, the total general fund increase, which includes getting the debt and all that. Look at that line. That's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase. Compared to last year's budget. As compared to the total number that appears in the warrant, though you go all the way down to the total district budget, which includes your general fund, your total general fund and any grant funds or, or, or food service fund, any other funds. So that total district budget, nine million six hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars is what is in this warrant. Hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars increase over the prior year, same line. Below that line is your warrant. We'll discuss that. That hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-two is your operating. The operating budget. Warrant article five. I guess I'll save you the tax rate impact of all the warrant articles, but we can look at that out. Article six is the LWA agreement that we just discussed. And in that warrant article, we notice all of the years that are in the contract. There were three years, we went through three years in there. There's two years in the contract that we have to put on there, but there's only one year that we are raising the money for, the next, next year's budget. That we're raising the money. So the two hundred and six thousand is the dollars for that warrant. But this vote, when the voters approve this warrant article, they're approving, approving the whole needed to. But you guys just look at. So that's warrant article six. Uh, warrant article seven, we normally have, just in case it gets defeated. That we can have a, another meeting, go back, open negotiations, whatever you have to do. Um, so if that doesn't pass, anyway, usually that does. Article eight is the flooring that we discussed. Article eight is the flooring. And then articles nine through twelve right now are what we discussed last week at the budget session as far as the warrant articles for the trust funds. If you want to go through and discuss each one.
I think the, I think the only one that really was that we were thinking about changing was the facilities, one to potentially.
Potentially cover windows. If we had to, but at least any match, matched any ground.
I don't know that we can squeeze even.
No, no, but I mean.
And maybe instead of sixty. Yeah, maybe instead of sixty. A hundred.
About a hundred and forty-eight thousand in the facilities. The technology trust fund that we have a lot of potential expenditures.
It's thirty thousand, nothing that technology trust, are you comfortable with them?
Technology, I looked at that last week.
Yes.
So I guess the question is forward to consider is you know, whether we want to put up that amount from sixty to a hundred. For the facilities. I mean, it would basically keep the sixty percent, right? Because we still kind of wanna.
Often look at the percentage.
Yeah.
To the same ratios.
Yeah. It's just if there's extra.
It's up to.
If there's more than, there's more than a hundred thousand.
Percentages come into play.
Right. So I mean, I guess it is there? What, what do we think about that? Do we think we, we want to try to put more into the facilities?
Yes. And the reason why I say yes is the CIP has broke out a lot. Given a lot more detail with a lot more projects. From a new building to paving, to lighting, to field enlarging, to all these projects, fencing, everything. And this will help go to allocate funds for those specific.
You basically want to increase the saving savings that we.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think saving a hundred thousand dollars a year is you know, not nearly in a lot of projects. Um, it needs to be increased and we can't, I mean, what we need to save versus what we should increase it by every year or two different things. So yes, I would definitely say increase it. And if, if next year increases even more till we get to where we're saving enough to maintain our facility without taking out bonds and lots.
So raise the percentage.
No, raise, just raise the number of dollars.
The percentages come at like, say, we're going to save two hundred thousand, but we only have a hundred and fifty, then the percentages, everything goes down a little bit. Subject. So yes, I would suggest putting a hundred thousand into the facilities trust instead of sixty this year. See, and also I would raise um, technology to fifty as well. You know, knowing.
Raise technology to fifties, as you said.
Yeah. And it's knowing that this isn't, we're not adding to the tax rate. This is just money that was underspent this year. It was savings that we've um, had from this year's budget. But if it's there, let's put it trust funds to maintain our school and equipment. Instead of giving it back to offset the tax rate, offset the tax rate for a couple of years until we can get the savings enough built up to not have to take out bonds and loans and debts.
Think it back to be explained.
Right.
Yeah, and it can be explained. That's kind of the purpose of the CIP.
Right, right.
To explain that we have a lot of, a lot of projects here. And like you said.
In both towns.
To save so you don't have to bond later.
And both towns are familiar with the CIP that town of Lincoln is going to be very aggressive CIP. And the town of Westside has done a lot of work on their CIP the last couple of years. So voters are familiar with that. It's not a a foreign concept.
Yeah, I, I, the only, only, big difference, I guess. For me with this, with the CIP and just because the trust funds is generally the CIP funds are very specific.
Right.
It's a, this is a fire department.
But it's different for a school. They don't have to be.
I know, and, but I think that that's, you know, that's where we need to be, we need to be more specific when we're asking for the settlement.
Absolutely.
For folks to be able to say, we want this because we anticipate, you know, we're, we're trying to anticipate these costs through the CIP. And that's and, and do some sort of forward planning. So we're not always sort of reacting to things that come up that we're actually planning ahead for things. Cause I, you know, I think everyone's, as we said, sees the value of the CIP. And that's what we're forward planning. We, we're gonna have to pay finance costs. We
Right.
We have the money. We're not asking for big chunks at a time. So it works out for everybody, but you know, in terms of like, we're not, we're not allocating it to something specific. We're just putting it into the technology or services trust fund. And then most of the funds just start getting bigger and bigger without any specific allocations. So, so as we're cleared.
Well, I'll apologize because I feel like now putting a half cap of other books because the CIP that we are creating has been very specific.
Is.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I, well, she's that sort of like showed it to us.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So yes.
But in terms of like.
That is true, although nobody's seen it, but yes.
Yeah. But we, you know, the idea is.
Yeah.
Bonds are specific.
Correct.
So, I, I mean, I guess up for discussion at this point is adding money to both technology and the facilities.
That would be nice.
Does anyone have any further thoughts about that?
If the money's there, absolutely.
And if it's not, if there isn't the two hundred or whatever it is, then it just proportionally goes down on each one. So.
Ultimately. Ultimately, it's you know, it's our warrant article trust funds off the, from the unexpected fund balance. And then it's the retained fund balance, five percent. So if, if there was nothing left over, we'd really just be taking from that retained fund balance. You know, and then whatever's left over, that, but. And then whatever we haven't spent it, I don't think we, we spent some money out of the retained fund balance this year for that. But there, there is some money in the retained fund balance currently.
Yes, that's just.
And that, that just goes back and then we sort of refresh it for whatever's left over. Very well then, uh, I accept the motion to increase article mine to a hundred thousand to increase article.
Article ten to a hundred and article eleven.
Sorry, yes.
Article ten to a hundred. The facility's expendable trust to a hundred thousand. And the um, tech, oh, sorry. So just I'll move the, what we raise, article ten, the facilities trust to a hundred thousand.
Sorry. Thank you, Tammy. Any further discussion on that? Almost a basic, sorry, I'm just gonna reiterate. We're gonna we're gonna be having the same conversation on eight, ten and eleven. That you know, we normally spend X, we're gonna be spending X plus. And as long as it can be spelled out, just to clear as to where this money's coming from, because people's ears are gonna start working out as to three out of four, why, why we're spending more money.
Agreed.
And to be fair, ten and eleven aren't spending more money necessarily. Right, like at this point. It, yeah, it can be perceived during these sentences.
Yeah, no, I get exactly what you're saying.
So we'll just make sure that we we have explain that. Explain that all.
The other thing is, I think we talked, we discussed, talked about. About the HVAC projects in both schools. Right, needed a roof thing for a little while. Tip top.
We've taken up a lot of projects, so now.
You have a lot of projects, but, but you can start saving for those, done a lot and not have to bond them, and.
By the time we need, really need to pave everything, we'll have a good chunk of it, all of that, but a good chunk of it, anyway. By the time we need a new roof on the high school, we'll have it. And we'll be gaining interest on it.
Alright, so the motion was made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Uh, all those favors in the papers saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those extensions and that motion carries.
And I make a motion that we increase Article eleven, the technology, technology expendables trust to fifty thousand.
So. Anything, Joe, any further discussion on that? All those favors in the papers saying aye.
Aye.
Those extensions and that motion carries. Were there any other? Amendments to the warrants? I don't. Don't believe it. And so I guess we just need a motion to approve the warrant.
Make a motion.
Yeah, or, or, yeah, each article.
I'll make, oh, each individually?
Or they do that, the magic theory, yeah.
At the hearing.
At this point, you can just approve as presented as big.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five warrant as amended.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All of the favors in the papers saying aye. Those sessions and that motion carries.
It also give you updated tax rates, because I, based on a four hundred thousand dollar house.
Yes.
Um, so I, I think that those, those are in there, so just, just so on the first article, page one, the general fund. Hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase. Last year to the, to the new year. Results in eight cents per thousand in Lincoln, nineteen cents per thousand in Woodstock. Or thirty-two sixty-seven on a four hundred thousand dollar house in Lincoln, seventy-seven eighty-four. Four hundred thousand dollar house.
That's just the additional, not the tax.
That's just the addition, oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Those are the totals. So that's a lot pieces of the tax rate.
Yes.
So. Uh, this is just a school impact. Number two is just, I always, like, what, so the second page is your separate warrant articles. The L W E A agreement, warrant article, flooring. And then. To see the impact of each of those. And in total, again, in total, it's. Five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase with your warrant, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seventy-seven thousand with your warrant, so that. Total with all of those is. Point two nine five. Increase on the Lincoln tax rate and seventy cents per thousand on that Woodstock tax rate are a hundred and eighteen dollars and two eighty-one thirty. Four hundred thousand dollars. It's just the change.
Thank you, Felicity.
And so do we need any more action on, on the budget? Okay, so the next step in that process is the budget hearing.
Yes.
And then after that hearing, we'll have a meeting to approve the final, make any, figure any adjustments based on feedback and then approve the final.
Yeah, because you need to vote that night, you'll have to post the warrant and everything.
Yeah. Okay. And just so we have it. Anyone listening, when is that meeting?
Well, well, Wednesday the twelfth, so we usually, yeah, we usually start that evening off with a budget hearing at six thirty, and then you guys adjourn that and go to your regular schedule. We're very, well, that's sixty.
Alright, thank you. Um, next up on the agenda is the Kinsman Scholarship Press One.
Okay. Okay, so we have, um. Two private trust funds, um, for scholarships that were set up at the school. Years back, and they're held by the trustees of the trust fund, so when the money was received at the school, it's supposed to be. For scholarships, and currently the funds we have in this school trust funds are the Kinsman Scholarship. Fund and the Sergeant Memorial, we have a Jewish in the store, the society, it's about, um, scholarship. During graduation, the kids earn these scholarships, and once they've met the requirements for the money. The scholarship funds are released, um, to the students or, and the school said that were awarded at graduation. So for the Kinsman Award, um. We receive the paperwork from the student that. Got the Kinsman Award. And for that. They have to. Attend at least one semester of college before they can receive the money, and then they fill out the paperwork and show proof that they are enrolled in the next semester of college. So Aiden Clare, Claremont, class of twenty twenty-four, awardee of the Kinsman Scholarship, has presented his paperwork. And is requesting the money to be paid to King State College on his account. So we'll need a motion to pay a thousand dollars for the Kinsman Scholarship Trust Fund for Aiden Claremont.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe, all those favors in the papers saying aye.
Aye.
Those extensions and carries.
So thi- this happens every year now, you know?
Yeah.
Time of year that the kids are starting their second semester, so. For the next agenda item?
Yes, that's the Sergeant family.
Right, so it's actually the Upper Pembroke Jewish Historical Society Sergeant Family Award. Same parameters as the, uh, as far as getting the money, um. So the student was awarded the scholarship at graduation. And they, they have to attend at least one semester in college, then they bring in the paperwork that they're enrolled second semester. So Jishnu Patel, class of twenty twenty-four, awardee of the Upper Pembroke Jewish Historical Society Sergeant Family Scholarship. Has presented his paperwork and is requesting the money be paid to the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences on his account. With, so we'll need a motion to pay two hundred and fifty dollars from the Upper Pembroke Jewish Historical Society Sergeant Family Trust Fund. For Jishnu Patel, Mass College of Pharmacy and Health Science.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. All those favors in the papers saying aye. Those. Statements. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And next up is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Um, so you have a draft of it. In front of you, there was quite a bit of thought that went into this, we compared the North Country Schools, uh, to our calendar. There are many ways that we could have, um. Chosen to do the Christmas, the holiday break, um, because some people were getting two weeks off, we presented four different drafts to. Was it four, here to that?
Uh, two. We narrowed it down into, we started off.
Okay, so narrowed it down to, we presented to the L D Avenue, and this is the draft that they felt was the best for the teachers. So we're here to present it, you'll see that in there, um, there are the six PD days, um. And, um, they're highlighted in yellow, you'll only see the two evening activities, because typically we choose the, um, open house. The time over the summer, um, but we could select that sooner and get it in the calendar if you'd like. And that's fine to do that. About seven quarters calendar. We really do. Administration.
So then here says graduation on the fifth. Can you propose the sixth?
So this is, this is next year, yeah. This is, yeah, this is. I know you're a kid, right?
You choose.
Every bell's except for you.
Alright, this is for next school year.
That would be nice.
Never know.
Awesome. See, there's no Fridays out from January this year, a couple of years ago, we had like a teacher in-service day or something scheduled, one of the Fridays of January, we had to change it mid-year. As we've remembered, was it like three years ago? Yeah, yeah, we're like, ooh.
No, no.
I mean, it was easily changed, but it was definitely in hand. Huh. Yeah. So do you need a motion to approve this calendar is presented, so moved, second.
There's no real pockets this year, right?
No, I mean, generally the, the areas is, are the start date, the ending, and the Christmas vacation layout, so.
Exactly, and our vacations aligned with the North Country, so that our students are, yeah, perfect.
I mean, there's, a couple of schools have two, so I think the holiday, but.
I think that's what I was looking at, is you come on Monday, and then you have a half a day on Tuesday, I mean.
That means you have to push everything out.
Right now.
So then graduation.
You know, but you think, do, do we go two extra days of June and have that time?
The teachers want, that was presented.
Yeah, and they wanted this.
That you presented to the teachers in person, they get.
That's, yeah, yes, they agree.
Yes, this is what they.
Good, they did all the heaven and pond before.
Yes, perfect.
I do think this is. I'd rather see it. Those two days before, rather than when we did the chair, which was come back for Thursday, Friday.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. That was a little. Yes. Tough to get it back on the track. So we had a motion, Tammy, and the second one. You know, motion by Joe?
No.
Yes, yeah, I.
Alright. Uh, any further discussion on the count? All those favors, uh, approving, saying, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those. And nothing on a continuing business? So, you don't have any students? Or three years, we didn't have staff.
Just me.
Um, well, this is from, one of the first item, I, anyways, from a bit ago, between. Um, absolute illness and holidays, and being able to have somebody be here, um, it's from November, so I apologize, but. Um, from Courtney Denati, she had doctor saying from the Lincoln Eye Care had come to the school. Um, to complete vision screenings at the elementary school for approximately seventy-five students, they offer this service each year for our elementary students. Um, and then from me, um, just wanted to update you that we are raising eastern bird trout in our classroom, um, it's been an official game. Part of the national trout in the classroom program, so we received over two hundred eggs from the Hampton Hatchery, and they're growing in our tank. We'll release them across the street in the Pembroke River. One state, we have a permit, um, sometime in March and April, and the kids are excited to see them, they, they daily, they come check on them, some of them are moving around and have hatched and prepping lessons for the elementary students. Just a life cycle.
Expect an exact day you put them in the river.
Is this something you need to do every year?
Hopefully, yeah, we have to take setup and.
So the Friends of Red has a fishing derby, and we have to buy fish.
Got it.
So maybe we can coordinate.
Right.
To buy those fish.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Just keep them, keep them a little longer.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Um, cool. And then also, um, with, with myself and Christie Durst, we're gonna be starting, she just started last week, and I'll be starting in a couple of weeks to use drones in our classrooms. Um, they were provided and are supported by a take light program, it's a free adaptable school curriculum made up of six missions or modules. Developed by Learning Scientists and Cast, which is the organization that founded universal design for learning, funded by the National Science Foundation. Through Take Flight, we'll have access to the curriculum tools and resources we need to integrate drones into our curriculum, help students develop STEM skills and increase the, to STEM careers. Um, they provide the drones, materials, and so. So she's into that with grade five, you know, pretty.
That's awesome.
Um, and then from E L A mentioned the poetry outlaw, fourteen elementary students, sixteen middle school students, and eight high school students. So that department just one of the good things for everybody who attended, and they were raised for hosting us at the station. And also from the Martin Luther King Junior Committee, that the students will open collaborative, uh, multi-grade advisory groups. We, we played a speech that, um, he had given to some junior high students in Phila- Philadelphia, probably what is in their life's blueprint. Choose the Blue Bay Boulevard. On the bulletin board, trust me, that is.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to say thank you for. What you have allowed, that was my first experience with that.
It's great.
And there was a huge turnout.
Yeah.
It's good to see. I saw most of the board. Maybe anybody, everybody.
Uh, I didn't make it this year.
You didn't? I've been hearing you rain about for years.
It's a brave kid. We had Christ being in the cards, and he said, well.
Yeah. In the gym.
Alright, so, um. We will. I would pull the board to go in non-public. I remember R S N ninety-one, eight, three, two, eight. Yeah, and receive for discussion matters, they're electorally adversely affected by patient personnel that are board member. Joe?
Yes.
Are you in my way? Sorry.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, 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 thank you. We are in non-public. And I don't think we have any votes or anything to do afterwards, so.
Thank you.